Okay, here comes some members of the public.
Great. Great, well, welcome to tonight's Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, January 10. Let's, can we have a walk call, please?
Commissioner Chalmers?
The President.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Here.
Commissioner Swisher?
Present.
Commissioner Williamson?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
So you have a quorum.
Thank you. So let's start with any, if there's any public comments on matters which are not on the agenda. So if there's anyone in the general public that has something to raise.
I don't see anyone with a hand raised at this time. But I also don't see some of our applicants here, so I'm thinking people might still be coming in the meeting.
Okay, do you want to? Well, I sort of would like to keep the meeting, we have three matters that we need to hear, so.
Keep going along.
Keep moving along, yes. So let's, if you could please have the Planning Director's report next.
So the city is, has the public comment date for the, or the first public comment period for the draft housing element is ended, and we have received comments that we're responding to. And then we're hoping to send a first draft to the document, of the document to the state before the end of the month, just so that they can start reviewing it, because they'll take 90 days to review the document, and we're expecting they'll have other changes. So you'll be seeing that document in the future. The General Plan Environmental Impact Report is currently out for a public review period, and that ends on January 19th. And then this, it's scheduled to be heard by the Planning Commission on the 24th, so that's the draft general plan and the draft environmental impact report for the general plan. And then you could make a recommendation on the documents to the City Council. Those are extremely long documents, and so if anyone wants a hard copy, please let me know, because I'll probably need to send them to a copier, because it just, it's really difficult to print them here. Although I do have, I do have some copies available. If, so it depends on how many are needed, but if, if you're planning to look at it on the website, that's great, so we don't have to photocopy the whole document. And then again, you'll just be making a recommendation to the City Council on that. And that's all I have to report, we don't have any appeals of any of your decisions. And, oh, I guess the other big item that I'd like to mention is that we've started a new digital permitting system called E-Track It, and so we're collecting permit applications online for both planning and building now. And it also allows the public and applicants to look at inspections and schedule inspections and see what's going on with projects, so it's been a lot of work for staff to set that system up, and we do have some issues with it as we're working along, but we're trying to resolve them. But overall, it's made our permit process much easier already, so let us know if you hear any concerns, but we're, we are working on the ones that we know about, and overall, I think the system's operating pretty well. And that concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Do we have any questions? Oh, thank you very much, Elise. All right, let's go to the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight. We have three items on the agenda. I will add that two of the the properties are actually in my local neighborhood, so I have to recuse myself from both of those, on their own Riviera. So Vice Chair Swisher will be leading that. So I would, now she's going to suggest that you go from one street to the other, so I don't need to come back in. But the first one we're going to start with, we'll have, we'll five of us, is 421 Holcombe Avenue and APN 227108, and I'd like to ask for the staff report, please.
Okay. 421 Holcombe is a level lot in a Baltimore Park subdivision, and the lot's 40 feet wide and 4,800 square feet, which is similar to many of the adjacent sites. The average floor area of the similar lots, in the similar sized lots in the neighborhood is around 2,200 square feet with a 39% floor area ratio. I have been having issues with this PDF, so hopefully. Can you see that? Let's me pull it down on the bottom, I don't know if you're even able to see it. The existing residence is non-conforming, because it has an attached garage that's four feet from the side property line where a five-foot setbacks required. And the accessory structure is non-conforming and setbacks, and the city has no record of permits for the structure. And the neighbor indicates it was constructed without permits, which seems to match with our records. The applicant's proposing a substantial renovation and construction totaling, or the total project would be 249, 2,499, sorry, 2,494 square feet total, which would be 52% of the lot area, but the proposed adjusted floor area is 2,255 square feet or 47% floor area ratio. And the adjusted floor area does not include the 239 square foot accessory dwelling unit. I hope this is going to cooperate with me. Let's see if I can exit this.
Hey, just as a side, I'm going to sign out and then sign back in on my computer, because it's finally booted up, okay?
All right, this might work better on here. Let's see. Sorry about that. The applicant proposes a two-story, four-bedroom residence and studio ADU. The design conforms with the lot standards for lot coverage and height, and the new additions would comply with the required setbacks. The home would be contemporary, a contemporary design with accommodation of roof lines and would reach a maximum height of 24 feet 2 inches. Much of the existing residence would be demolished, sorry, these plans are not, not going to be opening on my computer, I think. Oh, I'll let it give us a second and hope they pop up. Much of the existing residence would be demolished, including the entire roof, and all of the exterior finishes would be replaced. And the proposed project would increase the height of the remaining lower-level walls. Off-street parking would be improved to support three parking spaces, one in the garage and two on the driveway. And the applicant proposes to convert the existing detached accessory structure into a legal accessory dwelling unit. Although the plans indicate the wall heights of the ADU will not change, Steph believes that the existing structure has lower walls and the accessory structural wall height and the overall building height will be increased with the project. Sorry, some of these plans just aren't going to load up. The applicant needs approval of designer view for first and second story additions. They also need a floor area exception to increase the floor area 300 here. 334 square feet above the floor area that's allowed for the site. A parking variance is required for three onsite parking spaces where four are required. An exception permit's needed in order to increase the height of the wall that's in the side setback, so that's the area of the garage that will be increased in height for the garage as well as for the stairwell to the upper level. And then if, if the structure is demolished, or that wall is demolished, then a setback variance would be required to reconstruct that, that wall in the setback. And then an exception permit is needed for the non-conforming ADU to be increased in height, but if the structure wasn't legal, it actually just, it would need a variance to keep it in the four-foot side and rear setbacks that are required for a second unit. Steph believes findings can be made to support the proposed design and colors, which can be found compatible with the existing neighborhood. The exterior materials are a combination of horizontal western red cedar siding and warm gray stucco with cedar wood slat accents. The second story addition is step back on all sides from the lower level, and the modulation and use of multiple materials break up the bulk and mass of the structure. And Steph supports a parking variance for the site, which is consistent with other approvals in the neighborhood, and it would maintain the aesthetics of the street front edge. The site is also located across the street from the multi-use path, so there's much on-street parking available on both sides of Holcombe Avenue. As I mentioned, the applicant's requesting a floor exception for 334 square feet of floor area, which is about half of the upper-level floor area. 97 square feet of the upper level is a mechanical room to support the sustainable building features of the residence. But Steph's concerned that the floor exception is difficult to approve, because the planning commission must make findings that the applicant has employed mass-reducing techniques such that the additional square footage over the floor area limit for the site is mitigated and does not result in a home that ever built the lot. The design guidelines recommends minimizing areas of maximum height and building a second story within the overall roof form. We find it difficult to make findings to support the floor exception, since the design maximizes the wall heights and may result in a structure that's out of scale with its surroundings. The two residences to the south of the site are low, single-story structures with eight-foot ceilings, like the existing residence. And the proposed residence has tall exterior walls and lower-floor ceilings that range in height from nine to 10, 10 feet. The garage, the 12-foot ceiling with a climbing wall, and the upper-level master bedroom floor-to-ceiling height is 11 and a half feet. Steph believes the design will result in attractive residence, but one that could be reduced in mass, so it provides a better transition between the residence and lower structures to the south. Steph finds it difficult to support the floor exception, to allow the floor ratio for the primary residence. That's, that's greater than the 44% that was granted for the house next door for this site, since it has more mass in that structure, at least in Steph's view of the structures. So Steph recommends that the planning commission provide direction to the applicant to further reduce the mass of the structure. Steph's also concerned with a proposed setback exception to allow a tall garage wall four feet from the shared property line. This might be a detriment to the neighbors, as it will not be allowed to be screened with vegetation. In addition, we're concerned that the existing wall may not be maintained during construction, and given the extent of the demolition for the site, Steph would recommend modifications to the design to comply with the required setbacks. For the accessory dwelling unit, since we don't believe the structure was, or we haven't received the evidence as the structure was constructed with permits, we would recommend that the ADU plan be modified to comply with a four-foot side and rear setbacks. So Steph is recommending that the planning commission continue the project to require the structure to be reduced in mass by lowering the lower and upper-level plate heights and also bringing the structures into conformance with the required setbacks. But if the planning commission finds a project acceptable design, the planning commission may approve the project based on the conditions and findings for approval in attachment one, but you would need to verbally make certain highlighted findings. And that concludes my staff report, unless you have any condition, or sorry, questions for me.
Thank you very much, Elise. I actually did have two questions I wanted to ask you, and I'm going to ask them now as opposed to later, because I think it will give the applicant a chance to address my questions as well. The first one is, this application was originally scheduled to be heard back in December, and it's been a month now, so they've had some extra time, and I wondered if they had addressed in that period of time, any of the concerns that you have raised in your staff report, and any of the concerns that, I thought it was a letter from one of the neighbors, I think it was 427 Holcombe, about FAR drainage and the side alleyway being, being treated as the front door, if anything had been changed from, from then until now.
They haven't submitted anything to the city with changes, but those would be a good question to, for the applicant to answer during their presentation.
Okay, great, hopefully they've noted that, and then and then secondly, in your staff report, I just want to make sure that all the commissioners are on the same page. I was a little bit confused, I didn't know if anybody else was, but it sounds like in addition to looking at design review and variance for the parking and floor area exception, there were the two additional exception permits, and one of them is for the setback for the ADU. And I think what you're suggesting to us is that when we look at that.
So I guess, if, if the structure wasn't constructed legally, they can't get an exception for the, for the structure to be in the setback, so we haven't had any evidence, and we don't have any evidence that the structure was legally created. If it was legally created, then, then they could, you could grant an exception to make the walls be taller in the setback, but absent any evidence of that, I, I just don't think you could approve the structure to be in the setback unless you grant a setback variance for it.
So what we're really looking at here, if we want to allow them to move forward with the ADU portion of it, would be to to, for, would be to grant them a setback variance.
Or require it to meet the four-foot setbacks that are required for ADUs, new ADUs.
So they would have to move it, but move the
Move it further into the wall by four feet. Which would also allow it to be maintained, the exterior to be maintained, without going on the neighbor's site. I think construction and maintaining the wall could be challenging, just with the 10-foot or 10-inch setback.
Got it, okay, I may have more questions on that, and if any other commissioners have questions on that, they can raise that, so. But let's, I think we can hear from the applicant now, unless anyone else has any questions. Shouldn't dominate it. Then, anyone has questions for Elise? No one? So if we can invite the applicant or the applicant's architect to speak.
There we go. Hello, good evening, hi, it's, I'm Kenneth Holder. It's nice to finally be able to present this. It's been in work much of last year and spent a good bit of time in consideration of the neighbors. This is a neighborhood that means a lot to me, I, I lived on William Avenue for many, many years, for seven years, a house that I had, a similar house, a kind of a neglected home that I, you know, rebuilt and lived in it for seven years. And my family, my, has grown a bit, and so we needed a slightly updated, we felt we needed an updated home, and we found this one about a year and a half ago, and finally have what we developed, what we think is a pretty good proposed design. And it, I'm, I have an architecture firm in Kenfield and do a lot of homes in the area. This, a lot of the ideas that I'd like for you to keep in mind is some, it's sort of a culmination of things that, good ideas from other projects, but also there's a tremendous focus on the environmental impact that this house has, so we are just finishing up a completely off-the-grid, net-zero home out near China Camp, and some of the ideas we developed, I had intended to incorporate in this design, which is, you know, I'll make references to that as we go along, so. But I do know the sensitivity of this area, and I've always respected the focus on impact of neighbors, privacy, light, roof, you know, architectural integrity, and so I, I'll come back to that as we go through, but those are values that were you know, at first it was a little hard, you know, when I did my first house, you know, almost a decade ago, now. It was, I've really grown to respect it and appreciate it. Two of the most recent homes I did in the area needed no variances, no setbacks, no exception at all, and that's what I wish I could have done on this property, but given how tremendously expensive it was to purchase this property, I do have to also balance it with the cost of construction plus the cost of what I've got into the property. I couldn't be quite as modest on this one as I would have liked, so I hope that the, the, the commission can at least keep the current realities to improve a current home, to buy and improve a home in this neighborhood is extremely expensive, so. And I, I hated to have to bring that up, I have had now two quick meetings and then a more formal meeting, an answer to your question about have we, have I updated some of our, my thinking? Yes, I did not get such formal feedback until just right before the Planning Commission hearing, the, the last time it was due to be scheduled. So I was a little taken aback, because the four other, before Elise, I worked with almost every planning commission, a planning planner at Larkspur, was assigned to at different points, so I hope you can also imagine, I was getting slightly different bits of feedback along the way. I worked with Kristen for seven months, I worked with the, the two new planners at different points, and I really appreciate how Elise has come in and helped give some really good playing feedback, and I'm, I'm, at the end of, I'll talk this through really briefly, I won't spend a lot of time on it, but at the very end, I will show what I would call my kind of Plan B proposal to address. This comes, some of it comes from meeting with my neighbors, Terry O'Connell and his wife at 427. We, we met for quite a long time, and really, I hope they got that I, I'm open to their thoughts and their concerns. They went through quite a lot, I lived around the neighbor, around the corner, when they were doing their home many years ago, and I really felt for them, what they went through, to get 44%, and now I'm coming in and asking for more than that? I don't mean to sound presumptuous, but as I had to remind them, I paid more than triple what they would have costed to, to, to do the same house. The cost of construction plus the cost of land is ludicrous right now, so. But I do want to live on this street in Larkspur. I have, I'm renting nearby, and I'm planning on breaking ground as soon as I possibly can, so.
Mr. Holder, I'm just going to interrupt you for one minute, I'm sorry to do that. Just a reminder that the presentations from the applicants are limited to 10 minutes, and we really want to hear your, your presentation, and I would hate for it to be suddenly cut off by staff at the end, so.
I feel like that was, you know, because the drawings, I, I think you'll agree, my drawing set's pretty darn complete. I know pretty much what the, so I, I don't feel like I've got to go sheet by sheet, I'm going to just do the highlights here. If there are any quantitative questions, things like that, we can go back, but no, I'm just going to go sheet, actually a much more abridged presentation. So with that in mind. Okay, hopefully folks can see. Yeah, I, is my screen visible now?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. So these are for, three renderings and a photo that I think hopefully capture what I'm wanting to do on this property. Obviously, at 427 sets a big, strong precedence for a, a way in which someone could build something contemporary in Larkspur, but at the same time do something updated. You don't have to rely on overly traditional language to make something appropriate. So the, another thing that I considered in this was, yes, anytime you're building a second story addition, your neighbors to your north generally get the brunt of it, you know, their, their sunlight is paramount, getting daylight in all of the existing windows is super important, so I, I, I hope you'll see, and maybe you've already picked up on it, I heavily weighted the project, all of my second story addition, more or less to the south, to do anything I could to preserve the daylight in there, in, in, in their windows. The master suite is, is definitely shifted to the right. I, I worked as much as I could, as much as they would make themselves available with, with my, my neighbors at 14. There's a renter there, and, and the, the, the owner of the residence did not make himself available directly during the whole process. But you can see, this lot is quite narrow, and I would like some consideration for a technique that I had done. Elise pointed it out, that I had done a similar design for a house in Ross many years ago. Narrow lot, it's very tough to do a front door and not have a, just a giant bowling alley right through your house, and I was, I think successfully able to propose repeating that, which is basically a, a gate out at the street that defines the entry pathway down the side yard, and you enter into the main living space on the side. That allowed me to maintain two bedrooms on the ground floor. And that, that is a unusual technique, but I think it did work in this other project very, very well, and I live, where I live currently have this, my neighbor's front door is not 10 feet away, 15 feet away, and it actually has basically led us to be much closer as neighbors, I know their kids, I know the, the full family, including the mother, the mother-in-law. And part of that is the front door, yes, it's a change in privacy, but it actually has lent it to a much closer neighborhood feel, so that so not to go, I'm not going to go point by point on every aspect, I think a lot of this is fairly self-explanatory, I'm just going to jump to the more both, well, areas worth discussion, one of them that's being brought up, and you know, it was, the point was never made so clear about the existing garage that it does impose on the, on the, the south side setback. It was always said to me that shouldn't be an issue, but Elise pointed out that I am extending the height. So in my Plan B, I show moving that fully within the existing, or within the required setbacks of five feet, a 10, 10-inch shift. I'm just, the only thing it does do is it pushes me into demolishing the house. And that's okay, I, I've come to terms with that, I had originally wanted to preserve a lot of the foundation, and I've let that go now. It's, it seems pretty imperative, because I, I, I do have a look that I have in mind, so I'll let that go, if, or I'll, I'll, I'll surrender that as a possible to hopefully reduce an objection, because this, so the, so it'd basically be demolishing the full foot setback, so here is the path of entry to the house. Even then, though, the, the front door is set into the, within the footprint of the house, it's intended to be as far away as possible. I had never observed any of the windows on the south side as open, so I didn't think of it necessarily as being some huge imposition. I talked with Terry and his wife about that, and we discussed it, it's, it's just a, it's a difference of opinion, but I think it makes for a very sensible design. Let's see, so let's not take too long, actually now, if we're talking about, because I'm, I'm basically saying, okay, fine, this is a full demolition of the house, but I'll at least explain some of the important elements. I thought I had done a pretty strong job of just proposing a very small addition at the ground level, just to clean up, but I didn't push out or forward towards the street in any way. And here's the second story, as you can see, modulated, as much as I think made sense, I think it provides a fairly attractive sort of an attractive appearance from all angles, it creates, there's some change in materials to hopefully reduce the overall visual impact of a second story. What was really striking, I do, I don't mind saying, when I took, I, I have in my drawings at the house design for 427, and I put it on this house, I just replaced it and showed them a rendering of it, it was quite and it was, I think it maybe even shocked them a little bit about how much effort I've made to pull away from their side. So I think it's worth, at least, and I talked about the environmental aspects of what I wanted to do. In all of the houses recently, we've needed an entire space just to accommodate all the different systems, battery backup, hot water tank, server panel, battery backup. I have not yet been able to figure out through, I've even hired a consultant to help me figure out, how in the world could I get that all in this garage? It's not working. But when I was working with Kristen, she, her advice was just, just make it a living space, or just, but don't try to ask for an exemption. I actually raised the ceiling height enough to make it a, a living space, if I can. I'm going to put it in the garage and try to get a home office out of that, but the, but the, but the, off-the-grid, off the environmental systems that I have, the energy, the green-inspired systems that I've got are very, very important to me, so I, I do want it integrated into the design of the house. So also, it was, I, I, new information to me that I Also, it was I, I, new information to me that I would not. When I bought this house, it already had this kind of shed battery cottage back here. There's someone was living in it. It has, has a full bathroom and has a full kitchen. No one could necessarily tell me if it would be allowed to be rebuilt or not. Uh, so. I just moved forward with that, thinking that that would be possible. Um, I've heard. Uh, my neighbor's concerned that it is too close to their property line. I am perf, yeah, I, I've come to terms with, I'm, if I want this structure, I would have to probably just. Build it in compliant with the existing ADU uh, setbacks of five feet on the side and three feet on the rear. So that's another part of Plan B that I, I'm gonna just immediately put forward as something that. Okay, I, I, but having an ADU is an important element. I have. Really paid a lot for this property. I, I frankly, my, I have two kids who are sixteen. It's not gonna be that long before. You know, um, they're, they're gonna be uh, grown young people and I would like to be able to offer them a, you know, a home to help them through transition. Through college or whatever. Uh, I think it's a very suitable thing for use for my backyard there. Just to quickly go through elevations, I think it's fairly clear that I have. Um, tried to modulate the front elevations, the sides to a certain extent. I think what's controversial to me is this master bedroom. I, I, I'd always was so large. But no one was flagging it. I just kept moving with this thing oversized. Another part of my Plan B that I'd like to offer up is to actually slope this and. Greatly reduce the mass of the master bed, uh, master bedroom. There's the side elevation. Um, yeah, again, this master suite with its high clear story window really is quite. Out of scale and if I'm looking at it critically now. Um, so there's the, the front door entry that's recessed in. Um, and then, and then the two bedroom windows and then the uh, living room window. This drawing, it's in the full uh. Submitted set, everything in green is intentional efforts on my part to consider. The environmental impact of this house. These are systems that I've developed or been exposed to, worked with. In many, many homes, of course, much bigger homes on much bigger. Properties, but I'm still trying to include as many of these in the house as I can. Um, but the, I think it's worth at least noting. The living space, I am planning on putting all the primary living space. A slab on grade right at, right at the ground level uh, to, to, so that, so that I can, you know. So to any roof over that space is, I, I really took the roof lines of my neighbor's yard, of my neighbor's home. And just match that. Their, their roof lines and mine are nearly in alignment. Um, so I felt like that was a fairly intentional limitation to keep myself in compliant. So just uh, to keep myself, what would you call it? Um. To at least consider the impact as much as I possibly could on their property. So. Don't know how I'm doing on time, but so I just wanted to just quickly summarize, cause I would like. I really wanna move forward on this. I just would like to show my flexibility in this, that of course, I, now that I've. A calm, now that I've, I've come to terms with, maybe it's a demolition. That I'm not gonna be able to retain the foundations. I will go ahead and just relent and say, alright, fine, I'll move this. Compl- fully compliant, single car garage to the right eleven inches. And I just took the space out of this. It's, it's not such a hard step. It would have been nice to have it. But as you can see, these are still quite modest bedrooms, uh, even then. But I, I will. Say on a resubmit, oh, that's what, one of the first things I would suggest. Here's the master suite with an eight foot sidewall rather than an eleven foot seven sidewall. I think that seems much more. Considerate. Um, and then the ADU. Uh, like I said, I was always told that I was fine until December. It was, I, I thought. So I'll just suggest that I will go ahead and re, you know, propose a fully compliant. New construction of the ADU rather than this one that I think did right. I understand it concern, it concerned the neighbors. Because there was only like an eleven, ten or eleven inch. Uh, uh, space of setback on two sides, pretty hard to maintain that. Now, of course, it's not the only. Zero, you know, uh, uh, structure like this. My neighbor behind me has almost exactly the same thing. But that's a different question. That is an existing structure. But that's why I think I was told that there was local precedence for maintaining it. Um, but I don't wanna hold up my planning uh, process, so I just wanna surrender those. Another, one last one is there was a request uh, at the front yard. Going is, and I, and I think this rendering actually already shows that there was some concern that this roof line. Here was casting shadows on the neighbors on their high clear story window. So I just went ahead and removed the full overhang that was providing shelter. I'm gonna suggest that's an integral. The, 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 the whole house should have had, I, I, the design is a, a minimal. Setback and I, 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 I think that's what, you're basically just enough to carry the gutter, maybe a four inch, I'm sorry. Uh, overhang. So uh, those, that would be another part of the adjustments I proposed making.
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Holder. I think you're at time, if not over. Um. I do have a question is, so are your, is your plan then to resubmit plans for the commission to review?
I, I, it's, I, I don't know, if, 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 if possible, of course, I'd love to have it uh, remain, you know. Pass to just a, uh, sort of a zoning administrator review if, uh, but yes, I, I could certainly do that.
Okay, I, I'm gonna have to defer to Elise and staff as to whether that would then shift to. Cause if the exceptions and the um, the variance, the um, variances are taken off the. The list, then maybe it would just be a zoning administrator review, but I would have to defer to Elise.
I, yeah, I'd have to look at it too, but it might, it might be. Um, it might, I think the, because the second story is. The size it's at, I think it has to go to planning commission. And okay, I guess with the exception, if you wanted to make modification to the project's conditions of approval tonight, then. That would change things.
Okay, um, so let me ask my fellow commissioners if we have any questions for the applicant.
Um, Kenneth, I have a quick question. Um, yes, the climbing wall. As, as a climber of fifty something years.
Yeah, that is, it, it probably got lost in this uh, pass. It's not as apparent, but it is on the. Foreground of the garage. I had originally, my daughter and I are big time. Uh, rock wall climbers and we wanted a fifteen foot wall uh, in here. But um, Kristen made that fairly clear that that would start uh, double counting it. So we, so it's now just a. It's just a eleven foot high bouldering wall on the foreground in the garage.
So would it be possible for you to lower that garage, which is a, a fairly tall element? Um, uh. I know um, bouldering walls are, are fun for a while, but. You actually don't get a lot of use unless you have enough of them to uh, make it worthwhile.
Well, that was something that I, I forgot about that. Uh, aspect of what I, what I did discuss with my neighbors was. I am actually, I was originally planning on extending the existing framing. The height of the existing framing by using that sort of traditional technique of putting four by twelve. Header all the way around the top plate and going up fully twelve inches to get a nine foot interior ceiling height. Uh, I could bring it down six inches. Or maybe a foot, I could suppose I could bring the whole level down a foot. And that would reduce the garage interior height by a full foot. Much beyond that, I don't know what I could do, cause I really need this consistent framing, the floor framing um. Uh, all at the same height.
Yeah, it, it just might help the perimeter elevation a little bit, but um, uh, it's, for me, it's not a deal breaker, so.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well. Yeah, I would actually, I, I could see six inches, but as I said, it would be hard to bring it even a, a full foot down would make these bedrooms quite small. They're already small on plan and an eight foot ceiling height would be really rough. So I'd rather not, if I could. But I do. Yeah.
Sorry, any more questions for? The applicant?
The wall height, light lease might be worth, this is a note I didn't necessarily harp on, is I really kept the sidewalls. Wherever possible, as low as I possibly could, seven foot two wall height. Is, I think anyone would agree, that's a reduced plate height, but that was, I think it was a way to make, make it feel more connected to the, the mass of the house. So I've tried wherever I could to reduce that.
Alright, thank you. Um, if you have no questions from the commission, I think we can open it to the um, public and see if we have any public comments. On this application. And said, at least you wanna see if there's anyone with their hand up?
Oh, sorry, I don't have any, I don't see any. Oh, someone just raised their hand. So Terry O'Donnell, I'm gonna let you speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. I'm Terry O'Donnell. Um. My wife, Filana Yellow, and I live next door as uh, Ken mentioned in his uh, presentation. Um, how many minutes do I have just to make sure I don't run over time?
Um, we do limit um, uh, comments to three minutes.
Okay.
So I know it seems short, but um, I'm sure you can cover and, and we, and I will add that if, I believe you're the author of the, the letter from the neighbor. That's your letter. We, we have all read it. You know, it's our responsibility to read all the comments and, you know, I definitely read it in detail. So we do understand a lot of the issues that you've raised.
Sure. Okay, um, just wanna say that we did meet last week with uh, Mister Holder and uh, it was good to be with him. We had tried several times to uh, get together before the previous meeting, so I'm glad we were able to get together and we do appreciate. Uh, his taking the time to consider our concerns and uh, and as he's discussed tonight, some of the efforts he's been making to. Uh, look at possible design modifications to address with one of our biggest concerns, which had to do with uh. Uh, natural lighting and southern exposure views. Um, I would like to clarify for the record that I don't know, I, I'll. I, I think I speak for my wife too, that I don't, I don't think we were shocked when the demonstration was done by placing the house. Uh, a rendering of our house kind of a block thing over uh, his plans. Um, I, I think what it showed, I mean, I, I. Tend to, instead of just focusing on mass in general, I, I just focus on the facts of the overall uh, FAR. And I clearly know that there's a little bit less FAR in that rendering that was lifted and put on top of the house, but. I mean, you know, I, I'm not an expert to kind of take a look at the different aspects of the mass and, and, you know, make a determination. But anyway, I just thought I'd mention that. Uh, but uh, the, the FAR is actually to me, uh, to us, the uh. It, it's kind of the catalyst for some of these other design features that we, we do have some kind of existing uh, concerns with. Uh, basically on four points. Uh, one has to do with the um. Uh, the, the significant increase, it seems like there were some accommodations made to the size of the residence on the narrow uh, uh, parcel. And, and one of these being the alleyway, the north side alleyway, which is there primarily, I guess, for a uh. Side entrance to the main house and also uh, an entrance to what is likely to be a rental unit in the backyard. Um, and, and I'm glad that Mister Holder brought up the um, the uh. The discussion we had about the windows, because in, in fact, we do have um. I believe it's eight functional windows on the southern side of the house and we don't have uh, air conditioning in the home. So I'd say nine to ten months out of the year, we have those windows open for fresh airflow. And so we would certainly hear any noise right below. Uh, you know, the crop, the foot traffic that coming and going. And then there's also uh, the lighting that. I would assume would have to be in place for safety reasons and, you know, there's, obviously there could be some uh, of that as well. Um, so I just wanted to, to make that point. Uh, and then um. I'd also like to point out that the other homes on Holcombe that are on that, the west side of Holcombe, they're, that are all of the same, on the same sized lots. They all have front doors. So I guess it, uh, to me, it just seems to be an exceptional design feature. Uh, that uh, I don't know, it just raises some concerns in terms of the privacy and that, you know, additional noise that you might not hear with a, a front facing. As a street facing entrance. Um, and uh, I was actually quite pleased to hear what uh. Ken's proposal is for the um, the ADU because the ADU uh. And I won't go into detail on that since, as you pointed out, we, we detailed it in our document. Um, and, and all the points that uh, we were discussing about the maintenance with the north side of the, the. Structure and being so close to the fence and the fact that the um, the foundation is, was an existing open, freestanding deck for. Well over thirty years. So I, 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 I'm very happy to hear that that. Is going to be dealt with for structural integrity and uh, and compliance with the setbacks. Um, and then the only last uh, issue that uh. We wanted to note is that um. It, it seems uh, consistent that the city of Larkspur in terms of uh, um, the um. Excuse me, the variances for parking, uh, off-street parking. Um, they tend to go, uh, they tend to. Be, uh, coincide with the number of bedrooms in the home. And in this case, you're looking at a property that's, you know. Five bedrooms and four and a half baths, when you take into consideration. Uh, not just the uh, calculated FAR per the LAMC citation, but all of the, the ADU. And everything. Uh, and um, that's uh, you know, that, that, there's, that's a potential that you'd have five uh, residents living. On the property that would be a driving age. And so it seems that just having the three parking spaces is uh. Is a little inconsistent with, you know, that precedent. And I just wanted to bring that up, but. Uh, that, that uh, pretty much summarizes uh, you know, our primary concerns and uh. You know, as we stated in our documents, we're very much in favor of Mister Holder upgrading improvements on this property. They're certainly necessary. And uh, we just wanted to say that we do appreciate him taking the time to consider our perspectives and, and hope to discuss further workable solutions.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your comments. Do we have anyone else that would like to um, speak about this project?
I don't, oh, let me go, but I don't see anyone else with their hand raised.
Um, okay, great. Well, in that case, we'll close the public portion and we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. And. Guess it will still discuss, but I think there's a question mark about whether we'll be seeing new plans or not, but. Um. I think we should still discuss it as a, as a commission. So I'd like to start with Commissioner Campbell, please. If we can share your comments.
Yeah, um, so. It's a, it's. I think it's one of those where it's, it's not the design I would choose, but it's also not my house. Um. I, I don't think, I don't really have a problem with the parking variance. I agree generally with staff's opinion in the, in the staff report. Um, seems consistent with the uh, surrounding houses and, you know, every time I've driven by and I walk on that path. From time to time and there usually seems to be a spot. Um. You know, close to the, to the residence. So I think that it's kind of a unique condition where it's got an abundance of parking across the street. Um, I, I, I think I would like to see the ADU move to within the setback and the, the garage as well. Um, especially the ADU, that's, it's, it's a, a really tight setback and uh, ten, ten or eleven inches. Um, so I think I'd like to see that. And then um, I. I'm hesitant to, to grant a floor area exception larger than what was granted next door. Um, you know, if you keep getting bigger and bigger, um. You know, it can potentially create problems down. you know, it can potentially create problems down the line with what others can expect in their planning commissioner view. But I'm anxious to hear the thoughts of my fellow commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Swisher, we'd like to share your thoughts.
Sure. So, you know, I think it's an interesting design and I think the design standpoint of having the entrance on the side of the house is, you know, also unique and an interesting solution to the problem. I do sympathize with the neighbor, however, having windows right over that, you can see that that could be a significant problem with noise and privacy, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I don't, I mean, I get, that's a design decision and I don't know if it's in our purview to say that that's something that we can deny or not. I definitely agree that the ADU needs to be moved 10 inches from the side property is too small. And I wouldn't be in favor of granting a, well, it's not that it's even asked for, but a variance for that. And I definitely agree with Mr. Campbell that you just have increased one-upsmanship. You keep going up on the FAR grants and we're going to have a next person's going to be asking for point five two. And they'd be within the right to, considering we would have granted that. So, but I, I'm not sure that we can fully discuss it tonight because I think that the, the discussion seems to me that Mr. Holder is going to need to, because he's thinking now about a teardown. And so I think this is going to need to be resubmitted. And I know that's a real pain and I apologize for that. But I think there's too much confusion about what is actually going to be approved or what would be approved at this point. So that's my opinion.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Well, I, I, I really liked the house. I think it's a handsome, unusual, interesting design. And, and the FAR doesn't bother me on a 4,000, 100 square foot lot. I don't think that there's a, that that feels super massive, that the house is the way it's done. I do think though, that I would want to, there was a lot of discussion about changes. And I would be hard pressed to, to say, yeah, just go ahead and let staff mark all these down. So I'm hoping that we can bring this back with the changes he proposed in, in the short amount of time and see where it goes from there. But I think it's a good design.
Thank you. And Commissioner Williamson?
Yeah, so my take is assuming that the ADU becomes compliant. It seems to me like Mr. Holder's, you know, being extremely commercial around making this work for the commission. I think, you know, in terms of the FAR, I'm pretty comfortable with that. In terms of the window issue, I think that one's really tough to diagnose. Obviously, I wasn't on the commission when the but to me, it seems like they just essentially had first mover advantage where they were able to do a design with a house, you know, mostly in need of a renovation next door. And so they didn't necessarily have to take the same considerations that Mr. Holder's. So I think, given the fact that, you know, he's, you know, clearly very, very willing to, to do what it takes to, you know, give this street, you know, a better look. I think it's heading in the right direction. But as, as the other commissioners have stated, pending, you know, a clean slate of, you know, or at least a refreshed view of what's actually going to be proposed here. So heading in the right direction.
Thank you. So from my perspective, I think it sounds like we do, we can't really make a final decision unless we, until we see what the actual final plan is being proposed. So it seems like we need to come up with some kind of continuance for another meeting where he can come back. Because it's going to be a demolition and rebuild, which is something a little bit different here. I think it's helpful that the commission has given some guidance and hopefully some of these variances will go away. But it sounds like there will be some still on the table, such as the, the parking. My guess is they're still, he'll still only need three parking spaces. Personally, I, I think there's plenty of parking in that neighborhood and three seems reasonable. So I would be in favor of making the findings for that. For the design review, I do like the design. I think it's really interesting. I think it works in the neighborhood in that area and actually with the neighbor's property as well. I feel like quite compatible. And it seems like the accessory structure and some of the floor area ratio might get resolved with some of the changes that Mr. Holder is proposing. So Elise, do you want to guide us here? I mean, do we?
I guess the two questions I have is, is there, it sounds like there's no recommendation to change the entry unless the applicant decides to do that. Is, am I hearing that correctly? Just want to make sure he gets clear direction on that. And then also, it sounds like there's enough support for the floor area ratio exception, potentially if it's not a total teardown. Because I'm, if he, I think he may still be able to, or it depends on what he's proposing to do. If he's tearing down the whole home, he doesn't qualify for a floor area exception. If he's still keeping everything but that garage wall, everything else he was proposing to keep. And if he, if he can make those walls work without tearing them down at the remainder of the house, then, and I guess I would like to know, do you support that floor area exception if it's not a total teardown? And with, with the modifications that he's speaking of, or should we guide him to reduce the floor area?
So I think with respect to your question on the, the side door entrance, personally, I didn't have an issue with that. I thought that worked. And I didn't hear any objections from the commission on the side door.
I think it's a great idea, honestly.
Yeah, I, I do too. I mean, I think it's a really, I, I agree with Brock. I think this is a really nice design. I mean, it's, it's very nice. And I think it fits into Holcombe. There's a lot of houses that look like that. So I just am sympathetic to the neighbor who doesn't like the idea of it. But I think that, I think it's a design issue. And I think that, I think it's a nice design.
I think we asked the applicant to just really consider like not having bright lights shining. But I think the neighbor's property had windows high up, so they would be focused on doing it down below. So, so it sounds like we're okay as a commission with the side entrance. So if Mr. Holder wants to keep that, that's fine. If he wants to change that, that would be up to him to put in the new, in the revised plans.
Can I, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you realize that if you do a teardown, you can't have an FAR exception?
Well, I guess I'm just assuming that because it's no longer an existing home. Or you could ask for one anyway with a new home?
No, you can't.
Yeah. You can, okay. Sorry. Sorry to guide you wrong. Okay.
So he still.
He's just asking for a floor exception for a new home.
Okay. So it doesn't make, we don't need to decide that now then. We can see.
No, we can see what he comes back with, but it wouldn't matter either way. But if, if there was any sort of consensus to reduce the floor area, like that direction to be clear, so he doesn't come back with the same floor area. Because it sounds like the modifications that he's proposing, which I do think would, would improve the, the mass from my perspective. They're not reducing the square footage, but they are reducing the mass.
They're reducing the mass, but not the FAR.
Right. And, okay, and my, I, that complies with what I would be recommending or was recommending to the planning commission. But I just want to make sure that you aren't expecting the floor to come down because we should make that more clear.
So I heard tonight that we, I think we had mixed, a mixed response on that. So we can either continue to discuss it or I could hesitate to just maybe make the suggestion that we're probably okay with some increase in the FAR over what's the, the ordinance has stated, but maybe not to exceed what the neighbor said, what the neighbor says. I mean, I, I want to.
I would certainly be, I would certainly be more comfortable with equaling the neighbors rather than continuing to increase it. But I'm, I'm one of five.
And I personally have no problem with the increased FAR in the, and I think he's done a great job of reducing the mass or the feeling of mass.
That's not a deal breaker for me either. But I mean, I, I, the point is the, you know, constant going up. But I, I, I agree with Brock that this lot is not such that it's a, it's a overly bulky house, a lot.
And it's a tiny lot.
Sorry now, yeah.
Yeah, just rounding it out. I, I, I'm in agreement with Brock and, and, oh, sorry, Mr. Rice, and Swisher on, it's, seems fine for me.
Thank you. That, that helps. Steph, thank you. And the, I'm sure.
Right. So hopefully that gives the applicant enough guidance.
Do we have to formally continue the item?
I think we do.
Yes.
To, uncertain or?
So the next, the next meeting would be January 24th. Since he's the architect type, maybe he would be able to turn around plans quick enough to get on that. If you wanted to continue to that one, we could always continue it again if it's not ready.
Do we need to ask him or can we just say?
Yeah, let's, why don't we see if that's realistic, Mr. Holder? January 24th is the next meeting and then the following one is not until February 14th. And, and those, yeah, these meetings in February, I'm expecting to get pretty full.
I, well, so my feedback would be, given the confirmation that you've given me, I, I don't, I don't foresee really needing to make any drastic changes. The, the information I have would allow me to turn this around and get it back to you, Elise, get all the drawings you need to keep it on the next calendar. I, I've been, I really don't want to wait into February. And there's nothing really drastic to change. I'm willing to, I'll bring down the, you know, the, the garage and some of the bedroom heights. I'll bring back the overhangs wherever I possibly can and make those minor changes. But I only needed two days to do that, so.
Okay, so I would recommend continuing it to January 24th.
Thank you.
And the, and the ADU, I'm sorry, I don't understand what, what's the resolution on the ADU?
Oh, well, yeah, I, I absolutely concur with the commission to go ahead and move that within fully compliance. And frankly, I don't know if I'll have the money to even build it, but I'm going to ask for, and keep it in, in the drawings. Because I would like to build it, yes. And I'll, I'll move it to comply with setbacks and of course, reduce the garage footprint as well.
Sounds good.
Right. So can we have a motion, please?
I would move to continue. I don't, I still don't have my agenda. Must be in my car. Anyway, is it item 22-14 that?
It is, yes.
To the January, what's the date?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-fourth meeting.
And can we have a second?
I'll, I'll second.
And you want to do a call, roll call, Elise?
Yes, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is 315 Riviera Circle. This has come back to the commission. So for this one, I, I live within, I can actually see this house from my house. So I am going to accuse myself and pass it over to Vice Chair Swisher.
All right.
And then one just quick comment is I would suggest, and the, the item after this one is 361 Riviera that I'm also, I can't attend. So just please move straight on to that one, once this is done.
All right, so we're going to deal with 315 Riviera Circle. There's a resubmission from, or I believe it was the, was it November 27th or meeting? I don't recall the exact date. So I'll just go to the staff report on, on the changes made on this.
Thank you. So yes, this item was first heard at our last regularly held planning commission meeting on December 13th. This is application 2238, design review at 315 Riviera Circle. The design review is required for any site or building development or modification that requires discretionary approval. This project is for the addition of a second story and street-facing entry. It's located in the Larkspur Marina. And the subject property is on a rectilinear flat lot that totals 8,065 square feet in size. The existing home complies with the development regulations for the R1 zoning district, including setback height and FAR regulations. Apart approximately one-third of the parcel, the southerly portion of the parcels is within the quarter of Madera Creek, which is consistent with the other homes in the area. Since this home was built in 1975, only interior remodeling and maintenance projects have been completed on the property. No significant renovations or exterior changes have, have been made. This is the site plan, which shows the proposal as well as the existing available parking. The house does comply, has the two required parking spaces and a two-car garage as well as two guest parking spaces in the driveway. So I want to start by showing some current conditions of the home. This is the street view of the home here on the bottom right. And I also included a closer up aerial picture of the home. The existing residence has a large pyramid roof that supports the vaulted ceiling inside, which you can see here. It's got a big skylight inside and it's a significant architectural feature that has dictated how the architect has designed the second story addition. When this project was first presented to the commission on December 13th, the commission voted 302 with Commissioner Thomas recused and Commissioner Williamson absent. To continue this item, direction was given to the applicant to decrease the appearance of bulk of mass, specifically to make the mass less imposing and to break up the front facade of the residence. This is the current submission, the resubmission. So here we can see the existing northern elevation with the large pyramid roof, roof here. And this is the proposal, which includes a second story addition above the garage. And we'll go into the changes in just a moment. Here's the previous submission. This is what was presented to the commission on December 13th, 2022. And here are those two designs side by side. So the applicant, oh, my squares got a little messed up. I'm not sure what happened here. But the applicant did take the direction from the commission and made some modifications to the design. The modifications include changing the size of this window in the bathroom to match the size of the other window and the left of it. They've also added some larger brackets and this kind of trellis overhang here to help visually reduce the appearance of the bulk of mass. And they've also added a fur outwall here to again, kind of break up the visual appearance of bulk of mass. This is going to be cedar that matches the existing cedar fence in the front of the residence. The rear elevations have not changed from the previous submission. And the side elevations have changed very minorly. The main thing that's changed is that you see this fur outwall where it wasn't there before. Materials and finishes will match the existing. Here are some photos of the existing residence with the stucco exterior and oil rubbed bronze light. I can see the overhang detail here. Would you like me to go into more about the proposed project as far as the proposed improvement? I, I know I have already told you all that before, but I'm happy to go into it again.
I, well, I, I guess I'll leave that to the other commissioners.
I, I guess I should probably go ahead and do it, especially since Commissioner Williamson is joining us this evening. So the, the addition is a 514 square foot second story addition above the existing attached garage as well as a minor 34 square foot addition on the ground floor. The addition will increase the total height by five inches from 21 feet to, 21 feet and 11 inches to 24, 22 feet and four inches, where the maximum permitted height is 30 feet in the R1 district. The proposed improvement, the upper floor, include adding a family room, a guest room and a bathroom and a small balcony which faces the rear yard. and a small balcony which faces the rear yard as seen here on the rear elevation. The 34 square foot addition is at the ground floor will accommodate a stairwell and landing which will access the new upper floor. This addition includes two new street facing windows, one new window in the westerly elevation and two new windows on the easterly elevation. Staff finds that this proposal softens the appearance of bulk and mass of the new garage door, the horizontal architectural elements and the smooth stucco exterior which will match the existing. As designed, this proposed project is below the permitted lot coverage and maintains the natural state requirement and meets the minimum required setbacks. It's also within the allowed floor area ratio. The proposed floor area ratio will be 37 where 40% is allowed by code. And so findings cannot be made to support the original design. And as I said earlier, the comments from the commissioners indicated that the previously proposed design was visually bulky. And the applicant took that direction and resubmitted the design with additional architectural elements to attempt to reduce the appearance of bulk and mass specifically from the, what you would see from the street. The applicants have also provided letters to both the commission and the planning staff that further explain the choice to diverge from the city's recommended single family design guidelines as they relate to second story additions. Largely, those relate to that pyramid roof that is that very significant architectural feature of the existing home. And I'm sure that the applicant will go into that more when they're presenting. So while the proposed second story addition is more visible from the street frontage and from the adjacent properties, staff finds the project is consistent with recent development in the neighborhood. And then existing mature landscaping and horizontal cedar fence helps soften the visual appearance of bulk and mass from the street. The height and placement of the new addition are compatible with the prevailing neighborhood and scale and pattern of development. And I've included some photos. These are from the Larkspur Marina. I want to note, not all of these are, are projects that have been approved at design reviews. Some of these are the original architecture, but the reason I included these just so we could kind of take a peek at what some of the two-story residences in this neighborhood look like. It's not uncommon to see very bulky and massive neighbor residences in this neighborhood, especially the two-story residences. So if the planning commission finds that the product modifications are adequate to address the bulk and mass concerns that were raised at the last meeting, staff recommends that the planning commission approve project 2238 for the property at 315 Riviera Circle based on the findings and conditions of approval in the staff report. Staff finds that the applicant has made a good faith effort to revise, revise the design to meet the planning commission feedback, specifically adding architectural and design elements that help break up the street facing facade of the garage and second story addition. And that concludes my staff report. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. I, we've gone over it with the applicant before, but is the applicant present or the architect present? And wants to make any additions, additional comments? See any hands raised at all?
I don't, oh, the hand raised now. Laura, her to speak. Leanne Warner. And Laura Hamlin Design. Go ahead, Leanne. We're new. You should be able to speak now.
Hi, Leanne Warner here. My husband Brad also present. Laura should be also maybe raising her hand. She's our architect. I'm not sure if she's also available there.
I'm here. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, well, um, yeah, good evening. I'm Laura and I, as I said before, I'm working with Leanne and Bradley on the Warner on their second story addition to the residence. Stated in my letter, this project presented limitations on where this addition could replace. The intent was to minimize both the impact on the existing house layout and to maintain the integrity of the strong pyramid roof that articulates the two flat roof portions of the house. We wanted to maintain the simplicity of the structure, which is its strength. And we didn't want to add additional ornamentation to take away from what is attractive about this house. This most taco with clean corners, the cedar fence and the elegant landscape make this house stand out in the neighborhood. The proposed addition tries to respect this. The furin out on the wall on the right-hand side of the garage door matches the height of the existing garage. And the cedar siding ties in with the fence. The trellis brackets and the existing landscape reduces the appearance of mass and bulk, combined with the fact that the garage is set back 24 foot six, much more than the adjacent properties in the neighborhood. We hope that these revisions are more pleasing to the commission and also help soften the mass of the front elevation without compromising my client's wishes for this addition. And we are, you know, respecting of all this setbacks and we are not asking for any variances. So we are hoping that these modifications make the addition more pleasing to the commission.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is Brad Warner speaking. I, I'd just like to say that in addition to the setbacks and, and the fact that we're not adding any, asking for any variances, that we do have our neighbors sign off and the HOA's architectural committee's approval for our project.
That's great. Okay, any, any further comments from the public?
Yes. Oh, someone had their hand raised a moment ago, but I don't see it now. Okay. Oh, Ken Schwartz. I'm going to let you speak. You should be able to unmute Ken Schwartz.
Are we?
Okay, we're on.
Are we there?
Yeah, we could hear you now.
Good. Thanks. Okay. My name is Steve Horn and this is Kent Schwartz. We own and reside at 321 Riviera Circle, the neighbor house to the west of the applicant's, the Warners. The Warners have made a great effort to accept and respond to neighbors' concerns. We are in favor of the proposed project and consider it to be a small ask in light of the other approved projects in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Great. Thanks so much. All right. Any other hands up? All right. In light of that, I'll bring it back.
Sorry, let me make sure. I think they, they weren't raising their hand again, but Ken Schwartz, you're done speaking, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thanks. All right. That's it.
All right. We'll go back to the commission. All right. Well, let's start. I'm just looking at my screen here. Mr. Wagstaff.
I kind of wish you'd started with somebody else. It, it really hasn't changed, to be honest, but there is nicer detailing. Is that enough? There are ways that it could be mitigated, the mass. They're not choosing to do that. In the past, it would have never made it. I'm not sure what other commissioners feel about this. So I'm going to, that's all I'm going to say for now.
Mr. Campbell.
I, I think I articulated this last time. I, I think it's consistent with the other houses in the area. I mean, I agree with you, Brock, that it's a, you know, it is just putting another story on the garage. But when, when I was driving around that neighborhood and looking at some of the other properties, I think it's, I think it's roughly consistent with, with other development in the neighborhood. So I think I could make findings in favor of it.
And Mr. Williamson.
Yeah, my take really is if, if they're not asking for, you know, any exceptions and the neighbors are good with it and it seems consistent, then it, consistent with the other houses in the neighborhood, then I, I don't see any reason not to approve.
All right. And I will add, I agree with that sentiment as well. I think that they're not asking for variances. It might not be a design that, you know, I personally like, but again, it's, it's, they're, you know, they're dealing with a situation with an existing that pyramidal, pyramidal architecture makes it difficult. And I appreciate what the architect has tried to do and the fact that they have worked with us to at least mitigate it somewhat. So I could make findings for it. Does anybody want to make a formal motion? How about you, Mr. Williamson, make a formal motion? Okay.
Axe, you're supposed to make a motion. Sorry, my Zoom got frozen all of a sudden. So, motion to approve. I'm sorry, the wrong project. Motion to approve project number 2238.
With, with the conditions, findings and conditions.
Sorry, with the findings and conditions.
Per, yeah, I, I don't know how to make the formal motion.
Oh, yeah, with, with the findings and conditions in the staff report.
Yeah, there you go. All right. I'll second.
Oh, sorry, my turn too. Okay, so all those in favor, I'll call roll Commissioner Wagstaff.
I'll abstain.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chalmers is abstained. So the motion passes.
All right. That's great. Let's move on to the next property in Riviera Circle. Can we have the staff report on that, please? I think we have to make, is, do I, we need to say that this is subject to city council or no? Is this, is it just approved as is and?
Oh, no. Thank you for remembering that. The, the decision is appealable to the city council within 10 calendar days.
Right. Great. Thank you. All right. So next report, 361 Riviera Circle.
All right. So our next project is just down the street and very similar to the project I just presented. So pay close attention, I promise. I'm not, I'm not showing you the same presentation twice. So this is project 2227. This is designer view and floor area ratio exception for 361 Riviera Circle. I think I'm not in full screen anymore. So the, the applicants are requesting approval of planning commission design review and floor area exception to allow for the renovation of an existing one-story residence, including a new 995 square foot second story addition above the bedrooms on the easterly side of the residence. The residence is also located in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood. The subject property is on a rectilinear flat lot that totals 8,795 square feet in size. The existing home complies with the development regulations for the R1 zoning district, including setback height and floor area ratio requirement. Similar to the last project, this parcel has approximately one-third of the southerly portion within the Court of Madera Creek. Since this home was born, built in 1990, only minor interior remodeling projects have been approved. And per the city records, the applicants are proposing the first major changes to the exterior of the home. So the proposed project is is to construct 995 square feet on a second story addition above the existing bedrooms on the easterly side of the residence. The current home has non-conforming for parking. It has two required parking spaces in the garage. The driveway is not deep enough to be considered a guest parking spaces. However, the valuation of the product does not trigger any additional parking requirement. Here's an aerial view of the home at 361 as well as the existing home. As you can see, this home has a large vaulted ceiling in the middle of the residence, which is something that the architect explained to me as a, something they were trying to work around in their design as they did not want to cut into the vaulted ceiling that runs into the middle of the home. The addition will increase the total height by eight and a half feet from the existing height of 16 feet to 24 and a half feet, where the maximum height is 30 feet, maximum permitted height is 30 feet. Proposed improvements to the upper floor include adding three bedrooms and bathrooms. Three bedrooms and two bathrooms. And constructing a small balcony that will be facing the backyard of the southerly elevation. At the lower ground level, an existing study is proposed to be converted into an interior stairwell to access the new upper floor. And an existing laundry room is proposed to be remodeled. Here's our front elevations where we can see one new street facing window. Our southerly rear elevation includes the balcony as I described before. The easterly elevation will have new window opening, four new window openings, one of which is the large fixed window and the proposed stairway. And the westerly elevation has two new window openings. These are the same photos from the previous, just showing you all some existing. So as designed, the proposed project is going to be below permitted lot coverage maintains the natural state requirement and meets minimum required setbacks. However, it does require an FAR exception. The proposed addition would increase the floor area from 2,745 square feet to 3,740 square feet. The existing FAR is 31%. The proposed is 43% and the code is 40%. Staff finds the design presents reasonable additions for the residents that are well placed on the site and scale with the existing homes will not result in impacts to the neighboring properties. Staff did waive the requirement for a shade study at this residence. We did require that the neighbors that would be most impacted by, by the addition sign off on the plans. And they did. They signed off on the plans. They were supportive of the, of the addition as it is proposed. On the subject site and surrounding properties are generally placed in side-by-side configuration with primary windows infused towards the street and rear yards with some secondary windows at the side elevation. This proposed second story of addition is more visible from the street and from adjacent neighborhoods. However, it's consistent with the development standards in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood. The Public Works Building Department and Central Marin Fire Authority have reviewed the proposed project and offered no comments beyond the established standard conditions. At the time of the report, the HOA had not yet finished their review of this project. But since writing the report, the HOA has approved the project. I sent a correspondence to all of the commissioners. They included some comments which I will go back to this aerial view. It's also, I've fast become aware that this deck in the rear was built without permit. The applicants are currently in the process of attempting to obtain a building permit and after the fact building permit in response to code enforcement for the unpermitted rear deck. I recommend an additional condition of approval that was not in the staff report that the applicant would have to address the unpermitted deck either through a demolition permit or an after the fact building permit. The HOA is not supportive of the deck as it is built today. For floor area ratio exception, staff performed an FAR study on 188 residences in the Larkspur Marina neighborhood and found the average FAR is 31%, which is the current FAR of the homes. The highest FAR in the neighborhood is 62% and 19 residences in the neighborhood have FARs that exceed 40%, which is the allowable floor ratio in the code. I find that the design utilizes mass. I find that the design utilizes mass reducing techniques. The results from a home that does not overbuild a lot, architectural techniques result. And a design that blends in with the neighborhood and is compatible with overall character. The proposed use will remain the same and no significant impact to parking or traffic are anticipated. With that. Staff recommends approval. All required findings can be made for a design review. Required findings can be made for the FAR exception and staff recommends approval of project twenty-two twenty-seven design review and FAR exception for the proposed renovation. And site improvement and second story addition at three sixty-one Riviera Circle as condition. That concludes my staff report.
All right, thank you for that excellent and succinct staff report. Does the applicant or, and/or architect want to address any issues?
Okay, Brian Snodgrass, you should be able to speak now. There we go.
Hi, can, can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Excellent.
Hi, my name is Brian Snodgrass. This is my wife Debbie.
Hi.
Thank you for your, your time to see me. Thank you, Jackie. So yeah, I just wanted to talk briefly about our planned proposed second story addition. We are adding three beds, as Jackie said, three beds and two baths over the existing bedrooms on the west side of the structure. And the, the main reason for this is, is as, as Jackie mentioned in our last remodel in two thousand and twelve. We added vaulted ceilings in the living room and kitchen to create a great room. Which we want to preserve as, as we move into the second stage to increase the size of the house. We, we were aware that this would create more of a bulk and mass on one side of, of the house. And so we worked with the architect Mohammed Sedri to add a few design elements to reduce that effect. And firstly, the addition of an eve or fascia that wraps around across the front of the house to, to. To break up the two stories and that, that visual effect. Also, if you notice in the, the front and rear, there's two roof lines, one partially set back. And that's also to reduce that appearance of, of bulk, bulk and mass at the front of the house. And also shift one room to the side, so you don't have that box-on-box look. The, the architect also used only an eight, an eight-foot plate and, and a low pitch roof. To reduce that, again, that box-on-box look. And that bulk and mass at the front of the house to give a better visual effect of, of small box on top of a large box. Beyond that, we wanted to just add that we, we have the support of all of our neighbors. Including, as Jackie mentioned, the one to the west of us, which is, is the neighbor that is, is most affected by, by the project. And, and so we have their full support and signatures. Also, just a, a note on, on the FAR. We know that we're, we're going to be over the, the forty percent, but we are a growing family and we're, we have two twin boys that are nine. That are, are going to be very tall and large boys. And we're also a, a two-income family that, that works from home. So we need some extra office space, as I'm sure all of you. Anybody who works from home understands during the pandemic, you, you need to create extra space with, with, you know, in, in office or creating office space within your house. So that was the reason we, we needed the extra space upstairs. That was about it, it for me. Thank you again for your, your time and consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Does, is there anyone else in the public who wants to speak?
I'm going to allow Amy Smith to talk.
Hi there, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I was just listening to the plans and I, I was chuckling to myself when Brian had mentioned the size of the boys. Our daughter goes to school with the twin boys and they are the same age and the boys are probably about a foot taller than our daughter. So he's not kidding, they are a growing family. I'm one of the neighbors and we live on Corte Del Bio. Our backyard is a straight sort of direct view of their backyard, so we can pretty much see their entire house from behind. I've spoken to a lot of the neighbors in our area, many of which have done projects that are, I would say, sizably larger than. What the Snodgrass family is proposing, and like Brian said, we're all in favor. We support it. I've seen the plans. Everything looks really streamlined with how the house is currently laid out. And they certainly do need the extra space, so we are neighbors that are in support of it as well as. I've got a whole handful of folks in the, in the neighborhood who also support it, so we're in favor. Thanks.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else?
I don't see any other hands raised.
All right, then let's take it back to the mission. Who would like to start? How about, we'll go with the middle this time, Mr. Campbell?
Sure, I, I actually got a quick question, I think for staff, well, maybe the applicant too. The applicant mentioned that they added the vaulted ceilings in twenty-twelve, but our staff report says that. There were no major changes. Just wondering if that was not a major change or if we're missing some information there.
I would consider that to be a minor interior remodel. It didn't require any discretionary approval. Just done at the building permit level.
Gotcha, okay, cool. I think this house is pretty similar to the one that we just reviewed. With the kind of notable exception that I think they've taken some more efforts, which I do appreciate to, to minimize the bulk from the street. And in this case, from the, from the rear as well, because these houses are visible from two angles. You know, I like the double roof line. I like that the, the top is set back. For the, the upper story is set back from the lower story. I think that the floor area ratio is roughly consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. And so, so is the house and other than the floor area ratio, the design seems to be in. Conformance with the general plan, so I think I can make findings and support.
Great. Mr. Williamson?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Campbell. I think. The FAR seems reasonable and especially given the fact that they've made aesthetic and design choices to try to sort of limit the. The potential downsides of that. Given the neighbor's support and it kind of fits within the neighborhood, seems like a good idea to me.
All right, thank you. And Mr. Wagstaff?
So. I'm looking at the drawings and I probably should have asked this question earlier, but. There, there is an overhang that basically doesn't go over a roof. And if you look at the elevation. Where the second story is on the street side. I appreciate that they're trying to pull back a little bit, nine inches, I guess. To create a, a sense of some movement, but. The reality is the, the roof below is just on the wall. There, it's not covering a, a wall below. Now, maybe that was the intent, but. You have to go to the floor plans. And, and, and look at them at the same time. Because the upper wall and the lower wall, except for that little nine-inch divot line up.
You go around the room and all the commissioners get to vote like in favor, in favor, in favor. And it always stops this guy who's such an ass.
Hey.
Well, it's honest.
I'm just pointing it out and. It's, it's sort of about. What, what is that drawing telling us? And if they're going to have the wall go straight up, that's, that's okay. But it's very odd to have an overhang go across a wall.
Okay, yeah, do you think that's something that would? Is it something you think needs to be mitigated or is it just, is that a design decision?
Well, I, I think I was going to suggest before I was called an asshole, that maybe they eliminate that. And just accept that you have a taller element on the left side. Because you're going to have to carry that roof eve all the way back to the entry. And it's really not supported on anything, so just, just a thought.
Okay. All right.
Would you like me to share the, the part of the plans that show the floor plans so you can better describe this?
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful for me to.
Okay, because I've got. And I think I can give you control of the screen if that's. You know.
Mr. No Tech.
So this is the, this is the existing. This is showing where they're going to demo and put in.
Right, so.
Is this where you want to be, Commissioner Wagstaff?
Well, it's, it's, it's hard to bounce around and. I was going to suggest.
Proposed ground floor.
So this, this line is also the line of the upper wall, except for that nine-foot indention. Right? And so they have a roof, a kind of a small roof here that mitigates the mass to some degree on the upper floor. But they also have the lower roof, which is going across the face of the building. But it's not, it's not, there's not a wall underneath it per se. I, I know it's a minor point, but I think it's going to look odd and. I was only going to suggest that. Maybe they take that out and just admit that the taller, this element. Is, is its own roof and then there's another roof that goes to it, but whatever. I think they'll figure that out when they, when they get to it.
Okay. Understood, all right. Well, does anyone who would like to make a formal proposal? How about Liam?
Get my paperwork in order. So I, I need to approve. The application for three sixty-one Riviera Circle. Design review and floor area ratio exception number twenty-two dash twenty-seven. As conditioned in the staff report with the addition of the condition that the applicant. Permit or demolish the, the deck that was. Unpermitted.
Yeah. Permission to get retroactive permits or get a demolition permit for the.
Correct, correct.
Do you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right.
I'll call roll Commissioner Wagstaff.
I will abstain.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chalmers is recused, so the motion passes with a vote of three in favor. And. Like you say, but that's, the decision is appealable to the city council by filing an appeal within ten calendar days of the decision.
All right, thank you. So I believe that Chair Chalmers can return to the fold. She back?
Not yet. I wouldn't, you could continue to approve all the minutes, though.
Sure. And we get a vote on approving a motion. Well, I guess I'll make a motion. Does anybody have any questions about the minutes from the last meeting? All right, then I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the, what, the December was the thirteenth?
Correct.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the December thirteenth meeting.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Williamson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chalmers, they, it's a motion to vote or to approve the minutes if you want to vote. But your turn is up to vote.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm back now, sorry. Yes, I can vote to approve the minutes.
All right, so the motion passes five to zero. And then you're on the second, second business item now.
Uh, sorry, just came up to speed. Our planning committee, do we have any planning commissioners' reports tonight?
I would. Actually, I, I think I made this request once before and maybe I can do it again. That, and it may have been, I talked to Kristen about this, but. It would be interesting to know what other cities do in terms of FAR versus lot size and.
Yes, that's on our list, that's on our to-do list. We just have so much to going on right now with the housing element and general plan.
Totally understand.
Yeah, so. We, we haven't forgotten about it. And, and we're interviewing two new planners, there, or there's interviews for two planners on Thursday too, so if I have a full staff, we could get to that sooner.
Yeah, because maybe when we're going through the housing element, we're looking at the ordinances, et cetera, that's the time to look at. I think other cities adjust FAR depending on lot size and, you know, at some point, it's all point four, but. When you have a three thousand or four thousand square foot lot, it, it's hard to make that work.
Correct, yeah, so we'll, we will get that information for you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the planning commissioners? No, okay, and then in that case, can we please have? A motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Can we have a second?
Okay.
Is that a second? Yeah, okay. Quiet second. All right, thank you. We, we don't need a roll call.
You could do it, all those in favor, they are.
Bye.
I'm going to vote yes on this one.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And then the next meeting's on January twenty-fourth.
That is correct, January twenty-fourth, so please let us know if you can't make the meeting. And the general plan and the environmental impact report draft are on the internet. I'll send out another link just so you have it because. You, you will want to spend some time looking at it.
And what do you want us to do? Review it?
Review it. You'll be making a recommendation to the city council, and so if there's anything in there that should be changed, we still have time to. Make edits to it before it goes to the city council, at least the, the general plan document itself. And then if you had. It'll also be an opportunity for any members of the public to make any comments on the general plan environmental impact report if, if there's any, any comments that. Or changes that the public would like to see.
I do have a quick question for the other commissioners, which is, is anybody not doing hard copies of drawings at this point?
I'm not, I, I, on the net, but I, I'm still debating whether that's a good idea or not.
I think it's really hard. I think it's really hard, if you can't lay plans out and put floor plans next to elevations, it's really hard to pull it all together. And it's sort of, you know, things like what I was talking about just then is a pretty minor detail, but it actually isn't a true drawing. And you can't get that unless you put them together. And I've tried to do it electronically and I can't, I can't one together with the plans. And I know it's an expense to the city, but maybe we could go back to hard copies.
Yeah, I'm leaning toward that opinion myself, Brock. I think that I've tried it and it's really hard to get perspective without.
Yeah, just let us know if you want a hard copy, we can make, because right now we're making three, we can make four, that's not a problem. And Mr. Campbell, if you'd like one, two, we can make, we can make five. It's obviously, it's easier not to make packets, but. Okay, so, oh, so do we have everyone that's getting them?
I don't do a hard copy.
Okay, yeah, if you, if anyone wants one, just let us know. And then for, we have a, for larger projects, we have a larger project coming up that we've gotten, we have plans for everyone because it's just going to be a lot of pages with but hopefully be easier for you to review on paper.
I do have a question for Liam and Max, are you both familiar with architectural plans and reading them?
Getting more so.
Yeah, I think Liam, you do, because you're an engineer, right?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, I don't, you know, it's not my forte, I'm a lawyer by training. So I, and I would say that I do lean a lot on Brock and I think we should listen to what Brock says on the architectural plans. And because he, out of all of us, I think he's the one that really understands them and reads them and can tell the difference of what the subtle changes are. But I didn't know Liam and Max, how much background you had as well.
I will say I'm used to looking at plans for, I think, a different thing than Brock looks at plans for being an engineer.
So yeah, so I actually do agree with him. I mean, it's when we need to see side-by-side what is as-built and what the new plan is. It's really hard if they're not side-by-side, so I think that's a valuable thing if we can talk to that too. And.
If we can have people that are submitting drawings put as-built elevations next to the new elevations, I think it's really helpful to see that.
It, that is for me too, so I will change that requirement on our application requirements as soon as I can, hopefully tomorrow.
Thank you, Elise.
All right. Well, I have to call patience before it gets too late, so thank you very much.
All right, thanks for sharing, Jeff.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.